The organization meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District will come to order. This meeting is in compliance with the school code and is in accordance with the following notice, of which you have all been appraised and received copies of. In accordance with Section 401, the school code of 1949, as amended, you are hereby notified that the School Board of Directors of Upper Darby School District will meet the first week of December for the purpose of organization and election of officers for the ensuing year, and for general purposes. The first order of business is to nominate, or the nomination and election of the temporary president. I will entertain nominations at this time. Mr. Fields?
I move that we have Damian War Savage as temporary president.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, we'll close the nominations. Now we have a vote for Mr. Damian War Savage to be temporary president. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. War Savage.
Mr. Rogers, would you mind reading the list of legally elected or appointed qualified school directors at this time?
Sure. The following list of legally elected or appointed and qualified school directors is as follows. Terms expiring the first Monday of December 2025, Neil Desneuer's, Mohamed Afira Hussain, Michelle Piancentini Cao, Debra Williams. For terms expiring the first Monday of December 2027, we have Don Field, Kimberly Glenn, Desiree Murphy-Morrissey, Damian War Savage, and Brittany Williams.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
At this time, I will now ask each board member to affirm they have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles of Governance and Leadership. As I call your name, please state the following. I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles of Governance and Leadership. Ms. Brittany Williams?
I have read and understand and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Ms. Cao?
I have read and understand and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles of Governance and Leadership.
Ms. Murphy-Morrissey?
I have read and understand and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Mr. Hussain?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code and Conduct to the Principles, Governance, and the Leadership.
Mr. Fields?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Mr. Desneuer's?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Ms. Glenn?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles of Governance and Leadership.
Ms. Debra Williams?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Mr. War Savage?
I have read, understand, and will follow the PSBA Code of Conduct and the Principles for Governance and Leadership. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Rogers. I will now open the floor to nominations of the president for this board. Do I hear a nomination at this time?
I nominate Neil Desneuer's.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations at this time for president?
I nominate Desiree Lamar Murphy-Morrissey.
I decline the nomination for president.
All right. The only nomination that we have at this time is for Neil Desneuer's. Any others? If not, may I ask for a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The nominations for president are closed. Mr. Secretary, would you poll the board, please, on a vote for Neil Desneuer's as president for this board for the term of one year?
Ms. Brittany Williams?
Abstain.
Ms. Cao?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy-Morrissey?
Aye.
Mr. Hussain?
Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Desneuer's?
Aye.
Ms. Glenn?
Aye.
Ms. Debra Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. It is now the time to announce that Neil Desneuer's is our board president for the next year. Congratulations, Mr. Desneuer's. The floor is now open for nominations for vice president. Do I hear a nomination? Ms. Cao?
Desiree Murphy-Morrissey, please.
All right. Thank you for that nomination. Any others?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Damian War Savage.
Thank you. Any other nominations for vice president?
Debra Williams.
Debra Williams? All right. To make this easy, I will drop out of consideration, but thank you. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. That being said, if there are no other nominations for vice president, I ask for a motion that the nominations be closed.
So moved.
I need a second. Thank you very much. All in favor of closing nominations for vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The nominations for vice president are now closed. Mr. Secretary, would you mind doing us the pleasure of polling the board, please, first for a vote on, or how should we do this? First on a vote for one individual, then the other?
No. The board members will simply cast vote for whichever named person they desire.
Got you.
And the other option is to abstain.
Got you. So when your name is called, please say the name of the nominee that you would like to support, otherwise you may say abstain. Mr. Rogers?
Ms. Brittany Williams?
Desiree.
Ms. Cao?
Desiree.
Ms. Murphy-Morrissey?
Desiree.
Mr. Hussain? Mr. Fields?
Desiree.
Mr. Desneuer's?
Debra Williams.
Ms. Glenn?
Debra Williams.
Ms. Debra Williams?
Debra Williams.
Mr. War Savage?
Desiree.
The majority goes towards Desiree Murphy-Morrissey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. Ms. Desiree Murphy-Morrissey is our vice president for the next year. Congratulations. And with that, my very brief presidency comes to an end. And Mr. Desneuer's, no speech. Mr. Desneuer's, would you like to take this seat, please?
Very well deserved.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the fixing of date, time, and place of regular meetings and committee meetings. Our board and committee meetings will continue to be scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, with the exception for the months of June and December, where the meetings will be scheduled for the third, the first and third Tuesday of the month. An additional exception will be for the committee meeting being held in April, which will be scheduled for the fifth Tuesday of the month, respectively. If the schedule meets with the board's approval, I would like to direct the board secretary to post and advertise the 2025 meeting schedule. All those in favor of the meeting schedule, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The meeting schedule is fixed. At this time, I would just like to make a brief remark. I would like to thank my fellow board members for trusting me, trusting in me to allow me to serve for the next year, and I look forward to working with Vice President Murphy-Morrissey and the rest of my fellow board members, and Dr. McGary, to make the Upper Darby School District the best it can be for staff, students, families, and the entire district community. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I will defer the appointment of liaison representatives and committee co-chairs until January, when I've had a chance to converse with Vice President Murphy-Morrissey and other May I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. We will go right into the work session for the regular meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is a presentation of the Upper Darby High School Encore Singers and Concert Choir. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by board leadership of the Unsung Hero Award. And for this, I would like to ask Director War Savage if you'd like to make the presentation.
In 2002, the Upper Darby School Board established its first ever School Board Leadership Award to go to an unsung hero within our school community. All past recipients have served as role models for our students and community by providing exemplary, caring service in a loyal, dependable, friendly, and humble manner. It is a privilege to stand before you today and honor such a truly exceptional group of individuals, our school social workers. Today, we are gathered to celebrate their dedication, compassion, and tireless commitment to the well-being of our students. And while their work often takes place behind the scenes, it's no less crucial. And that is why it is so fitting that we present the Unsung Hero Award to these outstanding School social workers are the quiet architects of our students' success, building strong foundations of emotional support, resilience, and inclusion. Every day, they create safe spaces where students, like a former Damian Christopher War Savage, would be able to share their struggles, their hopes, and their dreams. They are often the first to notice when something is wrong, and the last to leave, making sure no student is left behind. Whether they're helping a student navigate the complexities of family dynamics, providing crisis intervention, or working to ensure that all students have the resources they need to thrive, school social workers are indispensable. They're problem solvers, they're advocates, and they're nurturers, providing not just a listening ear, but also practical solutions that help our students overcome the challenges in their lives. It's easy to see why they are called unsung heroes, quite frankly. Their work may not always be visible, and their efforts might not always make the headlines, but trust that their impact is felt every single day in the halls, classrooms, and hearts of our school community. They give hope to those who feel hopeless, and they instill confidence in students who may have never believed in themselves before. Through their unwavering support, they help shape the future, one student at a time. As we present this award today, we are reminded that heroes come in many forms. Some wear capes, while others wear compassion. Some speak in loud voices, while others use silence to heal. But no matter how they show up, the effect that they have on the lives of others is nothing short of heroic. To our school social workers, thank you. Thank you for being a source of strength, a beacon of hope, and an unwavering advocate for every single student. Thank you for the countless, countless, countless hours you spend listening, counseling, and supporting not just the students who come to you for help directly, but also indirectly, their families, other teachers, and this entire Upper Darby Royal School community. Your work is a reminder that true heroism isn't about recognition or reward, but about making a difference in the lives of others. And today, we take this moment to say once again, thank you for everything that you do. You are heroes in every single sense of the word, and we are honored to celebrate you this evening. Congratulations, and may your continued work continue to inspire us all. Thank you so much.
The third item on the work session agenda is the recognition of 25 years of service by Ms. Kamisha Simpson.
Good evening, members of the board, President Desneuer's, Dr. McGary, and members of the Upper Darby community. Tonight, we recognize Julie Kylie for 25 remarkable years of service to our district. Julie has dedicated her career to nurturing the youngest learners, first at the kindergarten center, and then as a first grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary School. Julie is not just an educator. She is a remarkable teacher whose dedication to her students, colleagues, and community has made a significant difference. Julie exemplifies all the qualities a teacher should possess. Her commitment to creating a supportive and engaging classroom environment is evident. Julie possesses a unique ability to understand each child as a whole, meeting them at their level, and guiding them toward progress. Her kindness, patience, insight, and empathy make her an excellent role model for educators everywhere. Both her colleagues and students deeply appreciate her presence and dedication. Julie treats each child as if they were her own. Her colleagues describe her as a dependable partner and a dedicated teammate who positively impacts the lives of those around her. Julie is a treasure to Hillcrest and the Upper Darby community. Congratulations, Julie, and thank you for the countless lives you've touched and inspired.
The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation of the annual financial statement audit for the year ending June 30th, 2024, by Baker Tilly.
I'm here to present those statements. I'm Caroline Hippel. I'm the partner with Baker Tilly, your auditors. There are statements. Craig has a whole bunch if you want them. I know not everybody's a financial person, so feel free to grab them. So the results of the audit, we really had no audit adjustments, no corrections for management, and that's a good indicator that you have a good control structure over your financial controls, meaning that you have controls in place that are segregation of duties, reviews and approvals, that there's not missed postings that we would catch or make recommendations to management to adjust. The financial statements themselves are 75 pages. I'm going to just go real high level, what they are. There is the page one through three is the auditor's opinion. That's our responsibility as the auditor, is to issue an opinion that the financial statements are free and material as statement. They're unmodified, meaning that's the highest level of assurance you can get, and that users of those statements can rely on the numbers presented in those financial statements. Pages four through 20 are management's discussion and analysis. That's unaudited information. A lot of it is comparative from the prior year, expenditures to the budget, information about your capital activity. It's really informative to the users of the statements. If you do grab a copy, I recommend that you look at that. It kind of gives you an overview of what happened in the year and compare it to last year, and it has an economic overlook for the year going forward. So it's considered unaudited because it's prepared by management. We do review it as the auditors to make sure there's nothing inconsistent with what we looked at, and there was nothing to really indicate that. Pages 21 through 32 are the core financial statements. There's a government-wide statement, which is on a full accrual basis. That includes your long-term assets, your capital assets, and your long-term debt, long-term obligations, like the pension plan, the other post-employment benefit plans. They come on on this government-wide schedule. That's most informative to your bondholders. They want to see kind of the financial position of the organization. And then there's governmental statements, and that's more on the cash basis. It's considered a modified accrual basis, and closer to what your budget and what you look at on a monthly basis. The footnotes of the financial statements are on page 33 to 63. It outlines your accounting policies and some footnote disclosures informational, can drill down more detail about your debt obligations, your pension plan, your other post-employment plans, and just qualitative information for users of the statements. And getting into the compliance side, it's kind of the back half of the report on page 64 and through 65 is your government, yeah, government auditing standards opinion. And because you receive federal funds, we need to issue an opinion that you have controls in place. If there were significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your internal controls, meaning they're not preventing or detecting errors on a timely basis, that would be reported there. And I'm happy to say it's an unmodified opinion, so nothing to report. The following opinion, the third opinion, this is the last one, is 66 to 68, is the Uniform Grant Opinion. And that's over your internal controls on compliance and compliance with the federal standards for your grant funds that you receive. So we audited the school nutrition cluster and the ESAR funds. You have one more year of ESAR funding, kind of ended in September, but you had about $8 million left in spending, so likely be audited again next year. That's a higher risk program, so we've audited it every year. And no modifications again, so no exceptions to report. If there are any findings, we would report it there. And the rest of the report kind of summarizes the results there. So if you want a copy, there's plenty, but, and I just want to thank Craig and his team. They're really helpful, and Mr. Berman really helped on the, we have to do a legal confirmation. He turned that around really fast for me, so I appreciate his support on that, too.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions? Director War Savage?
Not a question, but so much a statement. Thank you very much for underscoring how very responsible our administrators are with every single tax dollar that comes through here, despite, again, I'm going to mention it every time I can, we're underfunded by a drastic amount, so any way that we can properly control how much we spend, we're going to be in a better position, so just kudos all around.
Neil, if I could just make a comment?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say to Craig and the team, thank you. Craig, Robert Yamola, and Marvin, you know, total team effort. A lot goes into when you close a budget, and then you have to then be audited for the previous year, so I appreciate it. We have that ongoing. We also are monitored for special education, federal funds, and title funds, and we have another audit for ESAR funding that goes on outside of this typical budget auditing. So there's a lot of auditing that goes on, and it speaks to the amount of effort that goes into the district to be accountable for the finances, so good job to the team.
Okay. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 until 6:45 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as described by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. It's their motion to approve that previously posted agenda.
So moved.
Are there any amendments to offer?
Not at this time.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the Motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session regular meeting of November 12th, 2024, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. The report of the secretary, Director Murphy-Morrissey, please.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. The report of the treasurer, Director Ms. Brittany Williams, please.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representatives. Tasneen Yasmin and Timothy Bijou.
Good evening, Board President Desneuer's, Vice President Murphy-Morrissey, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and our wonderful community. After a speedy Thanksgiving break, Taz and I visited her past school, Bywood Elementary, for our December report.
I'd like to start out by saying that it was an amazing experience walking back through the sentimental halls of my old school. Not only is the school itself great, but so are its principal and assistant principal, Mrs. Mihen and Mrs. Newby. Fun fact, Mrs. Newby was actually my fourth grade teacher. Their dedication to the students and staff- Their dedication to the students and staff, as well as their utmost kindness and positivity, is truly inspiring. Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby are the heart and soul of the school, and their vibrant, hilarious personalities make them superstars. Every morning at Bywood starts with an upbeat song and Mrs. Mihin's classic line, "Keep smiling." They have an incredible way of connecting with everyone around them, making the school feel like one big energetic family.
When we stepped into the classrooms of Bywood Elementary School, we had the pleasure of speaking with the teachers. To my surprise, one of the teachers was actually my second grade teacher from Charles Kelly Elementary School. At first, she looked familiar, but I was stunned when I realized who she was. It was an unexpected but a great reunion, making the visit even more memorable. In her class, she has student teachers. When we walked in, a student was teaching the class how to do long division on decimals, and let's just say, I could not do that.
One of Bywood's standout programs is Bilingual Buddies, where fourth and fifth graders partner up and assist new English learning students. What makes this program truly remarkable is how it empowers students unfamiliar with the school and the English language to get involved, participate, and have fun. Through this peer-to-peer connection, students learn from each other and develop confidence and a sense of belonging. Watching the older kids take on leadership roles with such care and compassion is inspiring. And it's clear that the Bilingual Buddies program is making a meaningful difference in the lives of everyone involved.
Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby both agree on one thing, and that is that safety is one of the top priorities. As soon as you walk into the building, IDs are checked, no matter who you are. The security guard there is more than just great at his job. He's a wonderful person to interact with, always smiling, and quick to crack a joke. He makes everyone feel welcome while staying focused on keeping the school safe. On top of that, Mrs. Mihin has a big TV screen that shows live footage from the main entrance camera, keeping her constantly informed. They do a fantastic job of ensuring students, teachers, and staff are safe and cared for daily.
Naturally, safety is one of the top priorities. However, like any school, Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby emphasize academics. I have to say, I've never seen anyone with so many binders before, but that just shows how much care and organization Mrs. Mihin puts towards the school. We discuss the importance of training teachers not only on how to teach, but also how to tackle one of the most difficult tasks as an educator, behavioral management. As Mrs. Mihin would put it, "Clear is kind. Straightforwardness is one of the nicest things you could do." Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby are always on top of their game when it comes to behavior management. They both agree that one of their favorite things is to take over a class and start teaching themselves. With their wonderful organization systems, they also have the students work on goal-setting and behavior recognition themselves. This responsibility helps the kids recognize their academic progress and further understand how to regulate their classroom behavior.
As mentioned previously, Bywood Elementary School is filled with positive energy. When we chatted with Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby, they showed us a book titled "The Energy Bus." It's a book they are referencing all the time, and they even incorporated it into their YouTube videos on the district page. The book is all about how to fuel your life with positive energy through ten simple rules. Mrs. Mihin and Mrs. Newby use these rules to motivate and excite everyone at Bywood. Whether through their videos or daily interactions, they assure the school stays on the positive energy bus.
That concludes our December report. Thank you, the board and our community, for your time. Have a great rest of your evening. TNT out.
Taz and Tim, thanks for a great report. I look forward to working with you this year. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have an update on the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Director Damian Warszawicz will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you very much, President Disnoyers. We had two agenda items up for discussion that evening. The first one was the two thousand and twenty-four district review. The interconnectedness, let me do that again, the interconnectedness, there we go, among attendance, staffing, and student achievement, and it was informational. District administration provided an update on staffing levels in the district, student achievement trends, or student attendance trends and student achievement. Throughout the presentation, the administration highlighted strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities for improvement in all the aforementioned areas. Again, the presentation was informational. And the second item for that evening was policies. Board action will end up being required at some point. Policy three-two-three regarding tobacco and vaping products. There was public comment, but as previously stated, all this and more can be found on board docs.
Thank you, Director Warszawicz. We will now have an update on the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director Fields will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you, Board President Disnoyers. As stated Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, we had the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. There were two agenda items. The first item was the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget, preliminary budget versus accelerated opt-out that required board action. District administration discussed the Act One timeline as it relates to both preliminary budget and an accelerated opt-out resolution. Historical data as it relates to the Act One index was presented. Based on the information provided, district administration asked the board to move forward with one of the following. Resolution authorizing proposed preliminary budget, display and advertising, accelerated opt-out resolution. I think we are opting for the opt-out. Item number two was informational. This was a transportation update. This was, this was a lot of information, very detailed information. And I highly recommend anybody that has questions or concerns or wonders about how this district provides transportation to please look at this presentation. District administration provided an overview of the Department of Transportation Services. The presentation included an overview of operations, notable trends, and the department's efforts to address challenges and improve the safety and reliability of transportation services. And that was everything for the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Director Warszawicz.
Thank you, President Disnoyers. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Piotr Satini-Kao, the Personnel Report.
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available for the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Board President Disnoyers, if I could just make a comment about one of the retirees. Just for those of us who have been in this district for as long as we have, Mrs. Korneco retiring and back when making copies and paper was like a way of life, was a blessing to have such an expert in the copy center. I mean, it's kind of like a legend in the school district's history. Husband was a teacher as well for years in the school district. But if you're tuned in, I don't expect that you are tonight, but Mrs. Korneco just a legendary person helping run the copy center for all those years, so congratulations on your retirement.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. The policies for first reading tonight, no vote is required. There are eight policies for consideration for a first reading this evening. They are one thirteen point one, Discipline of Students with Disabilities, one thirteen point two, Behavior Support, two oh two, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students, two thirty-six point one, Threat Assessment, two fifty-two, Dating Violence, two fifty-four, Educational Opportunity for Military Children, six oh seven, Tuition Income, and eight oh five point two, School Security Personnel. As the summary of policy changes is rather extensive, I'll just note that the full document is available on board docs along with the policy report. It's the first reading policy report itself. Moving on, the policy report's second reading is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, I would just like to say there's a single policy for a second reading this evening. That is policy three twenty-three, Tobacco and Vaping Products. A summary of the change is as follows. During the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting, this policy underwent a second reading to adopt updates resulting from P A Act Thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. Updates to the reporting requirements from the Office for Safe Schools to the P A Department of Education were inadvertently left out of the updates the board adopted at its September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. These updates are being implemented in tonight's second reading. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Murphy Morrissey, the Facilities Reports.
Before I go over the Facilities Report, I just want to thank Marvin and his team for working so hard to organize all these outside organizations that use our facilities. I hope they appreciate him, and I hope they take care of our buildings. And before I read the donation report, I do want to thank the donors for their donations to our students. The Facilities Report, Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Deborah Williams, the Finance and Budget Report.
Thank you. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carries. Does anyone have a collateral assignment report? I will say that I will notify board members of collateral assignments before next month's board meeting. Moving on, is there any old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members?
President Disnoyers, I have an item.
Go ahead.
I just want to remind everyone of the Udi Bop sponsored and organized Winter Fest Con. It's like two different events all in one. It's gonna be taking place at the gymnasium slash lunchroom annex of the high school, starts at ten in the morning. There's gonna be a pancake breakfast with Santa. I hear he's got some awesome PokéMan's cards and candy canes and all that stuff to hand out to kids. Don't ask me how I know. There's also going to be in the gym and in the auxiliary gym, a whole bunch of crafts and vendors and things like that, and all proceeds from this event go towards supporting our scholar athletes as they go on these awesome competitions and come back, bringing home championships and gold as we keep celebrating them for. So if you're interested in that kind of a gig, I would welcome you to come on Saturday.
Thank you, Director Warszawicz. Anyone else?
First thing, I wanted to let everyone know that the Senate and House are not in session at this time. They will return and the new session will start late January of two thousand and twenty-five. Any pending legislation that they had prior to the session ending will have to be reintroduced in the new session. There are no updates to charter reform reports. One bill that passed prior to the session closing that caught my attention will hopefully be an excellent example of why things move so slowly. Senator Michelle Brooks of District Fifty got a bill passed. I did a real quick search on the bill, and it appears that it was initially introduced to education on January twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, and it did not pass until October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. So it took a year and a half of it going on and off the table and amendments and things being made, all to pass S B two-three-two, now Act One Twenty, Lyme Disease Education of Parents and Establishing Protocols for Tickbites in Schools. It took a year and a half of our taxpaying dollars for people to decide what we should do if a student gets bit by a tick while in school. Yeah, here we are advocating with all of our might for fair funding and to have our budgets on time. You will see a common theme from me encouraging everyone to get involved and talk to your representatives so we can move on to things that are vital to our students' education. In good news, Shapiro got approval from the Commonwealth of Financing Authority to invest in P A school facilities. A hundred and seventy-five million dollars will go to two hundred and eight schools, ensuring they are modern, safe, and conducive to learning. These are the changes that we need, and if we want to continuously seek growth and develop in our districts without it becoming a bigger burden on our communities, we all need to advocate for safe schools, student mental health services, E L students, and for students that have challenges in traditional learning environments. We do not really know what would be in store for us in two thousand and twenty-five. Still, if anything is even remotely close to what they said during their campaign, this new administration will have a direct impact on our most vulnerable students and families. We need to tap into every resource that we can to protect our students and help ensure that public schools will be able to continue to provide safe and supportive environments in which everyone can learn, succeed, and thrive. I do want to thank Superintendent Dr. McGary and his amazing team for all that they do day in and day out to help make our Royals all that they are to our community. In my transparency, yes, we do have hiccups and barriers and some things that no matter how much our administration tries to prepare for, nothing will ever be perfect, but without a doubt, this team is very proactive, so it prevents them from having to be as reactive as other districts. You're rather welcome. And so with that said, we need proper funding in order to keep their efforts going. We need legislation in place to protect our public school systems. P S B A has an advocacy engagement program. I have recently become a member of Education Voters of P A, and there are many other organizations that are out there that really need support, so again, I encourage people to get involved. And this leads me to my communications report. If you have noticed, we made a few changes in the layout and the information that is being shared. We now have an advocacy corner, which will keep everybody updated with new legislation and ways to get involved. We will be highlighting us, school director, every month so that you can get to know us a little better than from just behind these desks. And we also have an out in the community section now where we are making it a point to document when our school directors are out in the community. We are community members, and we are volunteering when and where we can to be available to listen to our community needs and to help explain what it is the school board does. I want to give a huge shout out to Aronda for listening to my ideas and helping me organize them so that you can all see that the newsletter is truly representing your school directors. She implemented things in a way that far exceeded my expectations. So thank you, Aronda, and thank you to all the school directors for getting out in the community and for sharing your joy with me so that we can share it in our newsletters. And that concludes my longest speech so far as a school director.
Thank you, Director Gunn. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with policy nine zero-three, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. Do I have a sign-in sheet?
We do not have anyone sign in this evening.
Thank you. Are there any submitted comments?
Yes, sir. We have one comment from Melissa Harris located at eight nineteen Windermere Avenue. This comment was received on the third of December at six-thirty P M via email, and it is a general comment. The comment reads, "My name is Melissa Harris. I live at eight nineteen Windermere Avenue, which is the street behind C V S at State and Lansdowne." Three weeks over, one hundred of your students were in my back driveway right after school lets out, and they were shouting and jumping up and down on residents' cars that were parked in the back alley. The police were called, but as usual, they run. This isn't, this isn't the first time your student have been in our back alley. Once, it was ten girls beating on one girl. Just because they aren't in school property doesn't mean that you aren't responsible for them. You can't tell, you don't know who are the troublemakers. You need to do something about this. I did leave a message with the principal which wasn't returned." End of comment.
Thank you very much.
And that is our last comment, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.